So good evening, everyone. It's now the posted time of the meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This time I'll call a meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, do we have a question?
Yes, sir, we have a question.
All right. This time I recognize Jason Falls, who's going to lead us in the pledge and give the next invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please plug in, Brett? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to gather here tonight. We ask for you to guide and direct those that will be speaking tonight, those that will be making decisions. Be with those emergency service personnel, keep them safe and out of harm's way. We ask to be sanctioned here today. And then, if you may.
Next on the agenda, we'll recognize any elected officials tonight. Next item on the agenda is we'll recognize any veterans that we have present.
Introduce yourself, Paul. Jason.
Jason Falls, United States Air Force.
Rick Francis, United States Air Force.
Dennis Stacey, United States Air Force.
Donnie H., US Army. Do y'all have one of the veterans? Kenny Pean. Come forward. I'll give you one. Like I said a few years ago, we had the county bed in, laid up with veterans brought on. Longmont. Good day to you, sir.
Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement present tonight.
Dan Allen, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Philip Dogg, Sheriff's Office.
Dennis Stacey, Sheriff's Office.
Frank Stone, Sheriff's Office.
And last, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Chris Martin.
Carrie Mount, Assistant County Manager. Martha Thompson, Legal Department. Katie Swanson, Social Services.
Jason Falls, Assistant Governor. Scott Odenman.
First item on the agenda is to motion to adopt a proposed agenda. Commissioners, before you, is the proposed agenda or any items that need to be added? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All of us in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Next item on the agenda is a special presentation. At this time, I recognize Joshua Prox, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. Josh, you can recognize anybody else that you have with you. Good luck.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's been some time since I've been able to speak here, and a lot's gone on in that time. So have with me tonight, I have our current Board President, Mr. Rick Francis, and Dr. Jack Weller, our past Board President, and Susan Allen, a board member. I have those folks with us there showing their support. But I want to thank the Commission and the county for all that you've done over the years for the Boys and Girls Clubs in various ways. I have some slides here I'd like to go through, but really quickly, is this, let's see, which one is it?
It's the down one.
Down, there we go. For those that are in the audience, and for those that may not know, our mission is enabling all kids to be responsible, productive, and caring citizens, especially the kids that need us most. A lot of people say, well, what is a Boys and Girls Club? And I answer by saying, well, what are we not? You know, we're not a daycare, we're not a place for bad kids, we're not that place there to take the place of the family, we're not a handout, we're not a hand, but we are a hand up. So we focus on these three things: academic success, good character and citizenship, healthy lifestyles. We add into our programs these five things. I'll let you, you know, you can read those, but it's big things. We try to be fun, we try to have positive role models, and we throw all the good stuff in on top of the kids while they're there. And it is an after-school program that runs year-round, or runs after school and then goes into the summer. But for some time, we've had in our strategic plan to strengthen our community partnerships, to open up new club sites, not just be a Shelby organization, and to ensure that every child in the county will have an affordable option for care during our school time. So when I was talking with Mrs. Mountain about what you'd like to hear tonight, she said, well, go back to last time you were here, go back to about 2020. We started doing, when COVID hit, we started doing meals in Kings Mountain, kind of opened the door to trying to offer some services in Kings Mountain. We were delivering meals to kids who did not have food during the closures. Our main clubs, Teen Center, our Graham Club, operated remote learning sites. And in that fall, we were able to branch out into a club at Kaiser Elementary. And that first year, we served fifty-six kids from Kaiser, and that was really cool. And so from that, from the success of that, they continued on into the summer, and then they continued on into 2021. And of course, you were supportive throughout all of that. The schools were very supportive, but law enforcement, lots of the county agencies were very supportive, and we could not have done it without you. So, you know, see some of the headlines there. We're delivering meals, hope is not being canceled. That was, of course, that we didn't close down during the COVID pandemic, we kept our clubs open, and then, of course, we spread out into Kaiser. We focusing on academic enrichment, big time, making sure that those out-school hours are productive, kids are learning computers, are learning STEM skills. So we expanded, I mentioned we expanded into Kaiser. Here's some photos of kids. I love to have pictures of smiling faces. So, South Michigan State Park, the Christmas Parade, of course, we're feeding kids, and there were our parks and crafts, and these are all new things for the kids that, you know, traditionally underserved areas that were outside of the Shelby's and all. Well, so now, well, in late nineteen, or late 2021, we investigated, can we go into Kings Mountain? We've already started a little bit of stuff, and so we did a kind of a needs assessment. We went to North Elementary School, and there were eighty kids that showed interest. So, well, we couldn't serve eighty kids, we didn't have the capacity to serve eighty kids, but in January of this year, we were able to start, and we started with twenty-six kids there. It's about what the room would hold that we were allowed to use at North Elementary. And at the end of the semester, a hundred percent of them had a B on honor roll. We're really proud to report that, and that's, again, we focus on academics, we focus on building character and living a healthy lifestyle. Of course, we had to close Graham, when Graham School closed, that was something that happened this year. But we partnered with Mount Calvary Community Life Center to open up a tween camp. So that happened all summer, and mostly our middle-school-age kids went there and allowed us overflow so that we weren't overloaded in any of our facilities. So there's North Elementary. You can see the kids being served there. STEM activities, again, arts and crafts, meals, they did some service project, and the bottom picture, it went out to the library. So kids around closed, were ended, kids around ended, and we reached out and had communications with Cleveland County Schools about how to make sure that every child had an option for after-school programs. And so we're really excited. This is the big piece that we wanted to share, was that, of course, is that in August of this year, we opened new sites in partnerships with the schools at Elizabeth, Springmore, Foston, and Bethware. And that immediately added about a hundred and fifty kids to our program. So that was exciting, it's kind of scary, but those are all going very well. We have, and now, we've been able to branch outside of that, so there's some of the grand openings that we had for each of those kids. We're branching outside of the Shelby's zone. There's a list of all the sites that we have now. We're operating eight, there's one that's not online yet, and that's the Longdale Teen Center. We are operating eight of those nine sites right now, after school. You can see the zones in the county where we have an impact. There are a few that we're still not able to address, but I think those are being picked up by other organizations. So kids, I'm pretty sure right now do have an option for affordable after-school care. This was where we were going. We're going to try to get fifty kids from each club or at each club, that's one of our goals, and, you know, local advisory board, and ultimately having each community support their own organization there. Those are just some of our internal goals. This is a slideshow I've used in many presentations, so this is how you can help. Ladies and gentlemen, audience, if you want, help us share this story, help us tell what we're doing, volunteer, make a gift, be a fundraiser, serve on the Board of Directors. Yeah, really, I know that was fast, I had twenty slides, I respect your time, but the big thing is we've opened four new sites. Expanded, and we're serving kids in every part of the county. It's very exciting, and I'd love to pack it with you to tell more. And we invite you to come tour one of the sites, come after school, just give me a call, my card is on there. Come see one of the sites and see firsthand the good things that are happening in the county. Any questions?
Thank you, Josh, for your presentation and all that you guys do from the Boys and Girls Club of Cleveland County. So commissioners, any of y'all have questions or comments?
If you have a question, have a comment, I appreciate all y'all do, because that was one thing that I was hoping to see, that you started expanding, and it's great to look around and see that, when you please, that you have expanded too, with intention to grow on. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, yeah. I'll say that the Springmore site has fifty-four kids, the Foston site has forty-five kids, Bethware has about twenty-six, and Elizabeth is the other one, and it has about thirty-five. So those are the kids that are coming right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabbard, too.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Epple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items for consideration in front of you tonight. Item A is your Tax Administration Collections Report for October 2022. I'm very pleased to report collections through October, fifty-nine point six percent, which is in line with prior years through the month of October. Item B, also from Tax Administration, your monthly abatement and supplement report for October. Abatement's total of one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and nine cents. Supplements total, one hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. Item C for consideration is Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Two on the Year from the Sheriff's Department. Request to budget seven thousand dollars, and this would be used to purchase capital equipment such as pistol pouches, belts, and ammo. Item D, Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Three from the Public Health Department. This is a request to approve an MOU with the various health lines and a grant, an accompanying grant, for twenty-five thousand dollars that will be allocated for professional development in our public health workforce. Item E, also from the Health Department, Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Four on the Year. State grant, seven thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars to be budgeted in our infant mortality reduction program. That'll be used to help provide education on safe sleep practices, as well as other initiatives focusing on infant mortality reduction. Item F, also from the Sheriff's Office, Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Five. This is a request to budget a state capital infrastructure fund grant, a SCIF grant, in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and this request will be budgeted or be used to purchase security screening systems at the detention center, along with some other miscellaneous computers and mobile radios. Item G, from our Planning Department, this is a request to set a public hearing for December thirteenth, 2022. This will be case twenty-two thirty-four, and the public hearing will be to consider conditional rezoning from residential to general business. It does have a conditional use for the purpose of operating a printing and packaging program. This is specifically associated with parcel number five-three-nine-seven-nine, which is located at twenty-four fifty-seven McCraw Road. And again, the request tonight is simply to set that public hearing for December thirteenth. Item H and item I are both requests to reschedule previously notated public hearings. Item H is a request to reschedule case twenty-two thirty-one. Again, we originally scheduled that for December the sixth, asking to reschedule that for December the thirteenth. This is a request to rezonate eleven oh-three Hendrick Lake Road from rural ag to residential, residential, excuse me, that parcel, it contains three parcels that are part of that public hearing. Item I, very similar, originally scheduled for our December the sixth meeting, asking to reschedule case number twenty-two thirty-two, which is located at forty-two oh-six Foston Road. It also is rural ag to residential, and the request there is to also schedule for your December thirteenth meeting. Item J, in your packet for consideration, is a letter of intent from Albemarle U.S. Inc. As the Board is aware, the county owns a piece of property, parcel number six-two-three-six-one, that we have owned now for a few years. The county's investment is forty thousand dollars for this parcel. It's a little over six acres. The letter of intent, in any way, is that Albemarle is willing to pay two-point-five million dollars in two phases for this investment, so a substantial amount more than the county's investment. This would begin the mandatory upset bid process, so at this point, we are simply accepting this letter of intent and would begin the advertisement and competitive bidding process to bring back to you after that time period has elapsed. Finally, for consideration, item K is a request to adopt a resolution that would change the upcoming commissioner meeting schedule. We would add a December fifth meeting for commissioner reorganization. We would also add a December thirteenth regular commissioner business meeting, and then cancel the December sixth and December twentieth meetings. And that resolution is in your packet for consideration. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Brian. Commissioners, you've been presenting with the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'd just like to make the motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any additional discussion? Hearing not all, those favorable and capable say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Now we're on to the regular agenda. First item is the Social Services Update and Director's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening. Before I get started on my presentation, I just want to acknowledge that we do have some social services staff, if you guys don't mind standing up for a minute. Many of them are from my management team, and I appreciate them being here tonight. And it's only because of the staff that we're able to do the things we do, so thank you all.
Would you introduce them?
Would you like me to? Yes, sir. So if you'd stand up again, I did tell them they wouldn't have to do this, but if you don't mind introducing yourselves and saying where you, what part of the area you work in.
I'm Rebecca Johnson, I'm the Adult Services Product Manager from the Social Work side of Adult Services.
And I'm Missy Bear, I'm the Management Analyst for the Assist.
I'm Andrew Andrews, I'm the Services President.
I'm Alice Wilson, I'm the Product Administrator for Economic Services and Child Protective Services.
Jerry Adams, I'm the Business Officer.
I'm Andy, the CJ Head, saying I'm the Services Group.
Thank you all. And we actually have some people live streaming, but we won't introduce them as well, so. All right, so thank you for having me tonight, and we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to go over today some data measures, budget, personnel, and operation updates. So starting with some data that I think is very telling about what the last few years has held for social services, this is the number of made and accepted Child Protective Services reports. The reminder that that is for children that are abused, neglected, or dependent. And what you can see here is that the last year, 2022, has demonstrated an increase in not just the reports, but also the number of accepted reports. In eighteen nineteen, we were accepting about fifty percent of our reports during the pandemic, which was predictable. We did see a decrease in those reports because children were isolated, not seeing teachers, doctors, friends, and family that usually do make these reports. And so when we opened back up after those two years, not only did we see an increase in reports, but we saw a more serious response to what we had missed through the two-year pandemic. And so we've increased the number of reports we're accepting to around seventy-five percent instead of the standard fifty before that. We also see a similar trend regarding the number of children in foster care. And so obviously, as a director, and part of my work is to make sure that we take safety and the safety of children at the most important thing we do. However, we also work to place with relatives and do least restrictive ways of caring for those children so that we don't have to bring them into care if we don't have to. And the truth of it is, is that children don't have great outcomes if they come into DSS custody, so if we can prevent that, we want to do that. We are seeing the same trend that we had in Child Protective Services where the numbers, because of those last numbers, went down. We didn't have as many reports, we also weren't bringing as many kids into care, and then when we opened back up and saw more reports, we saw more kids enter care. And we would expect that to level out over the next few years. Oops, going the wrong way. So we saw the same trend in our adoption completions, and what this demonstrates is that adoptions take about two years after children enter care, and so you can see the same trend continuing. If I were to predict, and I believe it will absolutely happen, that 2023, we will see an increase in adoptions again. In our Adult Protective Services, we are seeing obviously more reports. These are a number of reports throughout the year, and those continue to grow. What is sometimes unknown when you think about Adult Protective Services is that this is just the elderly, these are any people over the age of eighteen. And so what we're seeing in this trend is that not just are we seeing more reports, but we're seeing younger people being reported that meet the criteria because of the opioid epidemic, because of some of our mental health challenges. And so more and more people are coming to our attention that are younger. Our Medicaid recipients, and as you know, this is something we do a lot of work on from a prevention perspective, but we have a large poverty rate in Cleveland County, and the pandemic also created more layoffs or people choosing to not work, more recipients for Medicaid, and we can see that that continues to increase in Cleveland County. This also, in twenty-one, twenty-two, represents the federal state of emergency, which means that we're not, anyone who became eligible during the pandemic has not been removed from eligibility, even if they no longer meet the criteria. And they will not be removed until the federal emergency ends, which I just learned tonight, that that won't be in January, so it'll be sometime next spring possibly, or after that. And so we continue to just grow these numbers of Medicaid recipients. What I will tell you is even as we start going back and recertifying people, we believe the Medicaid recipients in our county will continue to increase. So let's talk about our budget performance. The Department of Social Services budget is twenty-point-six million dollars, and most of that money comes from the federal and state government. As you can see here, we do a comparison of like sites and like counties to our demographic. And so we have a hundred thousand people, our peer counties have right about that, but our Medicaid eligibility is much higher than our peer counties, at fourteen percent higher than the average for our peers. And that then drives our FTEs being higher as well, because we need more people to meet the demand in Cleveland County. However, there's good news, we're operating at a very high efficiency. So ten years ago, in 2012, our Department of Social Services budget was that twenty-one point three million dollars. Ten years later now, in 2022, we have a budget of twenty-point-six million, and so we're actually about three-quarters of a million less than we were from ten years ago. We also, a number, I don't know if I have a pointer, but that number at the last column that you see that says five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars per member is less than our peers at six-hundred-and-twenty-eight. It also is almost three-hundred dollars less than we spent ten years ago. So our efficiency of operation has definitely increased, and we contribute a lot of this to doing zero-based budgeting and operational efficiencies. So you might say to yourself, oh, well, then do we have enough people to do the work? And yes, we do. So you can see that at fully budgeted FTEs, we're at about a hundred and sixty-nine participants per worker, and that's comparable to our surrounding counties as well. On a personnel note, I want to talk about some of the things that we are seeing around our staff. The first one is a concerning rate for me, obviously, as we're seeing more turnover in Department of Social Services. That is not unique to Cleveland County. I said in a lot of these meetings, and we've talked about the great resignation and the first challenges, but I also don't like those numbers and want to make sure that we can make a change. The good thing that you'll hear tonight, probably should have put it on the slide, is that as of today, as I stand in front of you, we have twelve vacancies of two-hundred-and-five positions, which is more like five percent rather than that thirty-one percent. If we can continue with the strategies I'm about to demonstrate or using, we will be in a much better place, and the staff will feel that, and the workload will be more Like I said, this is a statewide problem, and so the state has actually done a recruitment campaign for social services. We are seeing less, excuse me, we're seeing, we're seeing less people come out of school, both at the college level, the graduate level, and also even the community college level that are interested in social services jobs. And so we really need to get excitement around that and find people that are interested in doing this kind of work, and that's what the recruitment campaign is all about. We also have been working on competitive pay, looking at our surrounding counties to make sure that we're in line with what they pay, or doing a better job of paying our staff so that they don't leave. We've been doing job fairs, and we've been able to hire people on the spot or the next day, which is a great way to bring people in quickly. And we've also, the reason that we're at five percent right now is we've streamlined our interview and hiring process, so when a job closes, within two weeks, we're offering, we've interviewed and are offering a position. That seems to be making a big difference because we're beating our competitors. We also obviously want to keep all of our staff, especially those I just introduced you to. You know, we have a really great talent pool at DSS, and so we're working on that pay and class comparison to make sure that the people that work for us and have for a while are competitively paid. We also, for the first time this year, have brought in part-time positions to support the full-time staff, and that's working well. We have contracted with workers that do temporary work, especially in the area of social work, where we've seen some of the bigger turnover concerns. And then just recently, this month, we posted transportation specialists so that when we have social workers doing a lot of traveling, they can focus on the social work, and the transportation specialist can do the transportation. We really want to continue to increase our performance development within house. Obviously, seeing our staff be able to move into leadership positions is very important. And so we have done a Director's Practice Academy for the last two years, where staff get an opportunity to sit and meet with me and talk about leadership, talk about development, talk about things going on in the organization that we, as a team, can change. We also did two leadership academies that are year-long. The first one in 2021 was for the supervisors, and then this year, we're focused on all of our staff, so they're all going through a Leadership Practice Academy. They just finished team building at Hannah Park this last week, so. We do conference forums with every single worker every single month, that gives feedback from the supervisor level to the staff. And so we participate in feedback sessions. We really want to see our internal applicants succeed. Sorry, I keep going the wrong way. And so I also have an operational update for you. As many of you know, in 2018, the state went to a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the counties based on funding. And they have about twenty metrics that we need to meet every year in order to demonstrate performance. And what I can tell you that we are meeting all of those metrics as of the end of fiscal year, this fiscal year. What has changed around that is that in child support, in previous years, we were not meeting it, and we currently are. We also have implemented internal controls, so around continuous quality improvement. This last year, we hired program manager and a supervisor to help us with quality assurance. Previously, before September twenty-one, we were reliant on the state to do our reviews and give us feedback. We now have targeted reviews in-house that help us stay on top of these important areas like screening reports, safety assessments, our case decisions at investigations, our case planning with families in foster care and in-home, and then also making regular contacts with families. And what I can report is this is helping us stay very effective and efficient in our work. Another operational goal was to go paperless. And, you know, when I came here in 2019, DSS was very much a paper county, lots of paper. And so we started working on a document imaging system, and with the help of IT, we purchased Traverse, and we have been slowly moving child support this year to a paperless system. They're our biggest paper. We have about thirty-four, four file cabinet drawers full of paper. And so our goal will be this year, we'll complete that project, then we'll move to child and adult services next year with economic services finished up. So by the time the end of 2024 rolls around, we will be a fully paperless system. We have hired some scanners, and we're using the retention schedule that you all adopted to assure that we're purging accurately as well. We've also had some technology innovations that have helped us be more effective and efficient. And we purchased a system called iReception, which connects the entire agency regarding in and out board, so we know where everyone is, especially our social workers, staff in the field. We also can queue our customers coming into particular rooms, so less people are touching those folks as they run through our system. That will be even more effective when we move to the Health Department, and we have interview rooms there. We also have upgraded our case management system to a cloud-based system that helps us be more mobile. And we recently have purchased a payment system for our foster care payments to enhance our efficiency, reduce our errors, and maximize our benefits, also assuring that our foster parents get paid, which they appreciate. And this is exciting. This week, actually yesterday, all of child support moved into the Health Department. And so we are now in one program area co-located with the Health Department. And so any of you who want to come by and visit them, they would love to see you, and so would I. And we would also be able to show off our new area here. The plan will be that the rest of us will move in in January when the downstairs is complete. So. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Katie. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a comment. I guess since we're combining two groups, two departments in one building, I think our Ken and Andrew look at how we're going to name that building, because it's not going to be just the Health Department building. It's going to be Health Department and DSS. So we need to do something to recognize that we have two departments in it for some way, just a suggestion. Also, in looking at the group you got, don't you have, one of your supervisors going to retire this month?
We do have a retirement.
Why don't you recognize or have a first hand out?
That's right. Mary Adders has been with us, how many years, Mary?
For the first time I was here for almost nine years, not eight, but about six months later, so I think about twenty-eight and a half.
Twenty-eight and a half years. And we are all going to miss her. It has been, a hard thinking about her leaving has been tough, right? So, but we, she's been an excellent person, definitely for me and also for the staff. And we wish her the best, obviously, but we're definitely going to miss her.
I enjoyed your presentation, and thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
I've got one question.
Mm-hmm.
One of the slides said reports made versus accepted. Does that just mean that you determined there was no need to make a report?
No, the report comes in, and then we screen the report in or out based on certain criteria. And so the ones that we screen out means they didn't meet the criteria.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, with over a third of our county now on Medicaid, I realize your job is a challenge, but, you know, this, this is one place we got to get it right, and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the business overlay corridor protection. And I'll recognize Chris Martin, our planning director.
Appreciate you, Board, for asking me to come speak about the corridor protection overlay zoning district. It has been a topic of discussion recently. And what I wanted to do tonight was share with you what it is and what the purpose is, and then also give you, give you some options if the Board wishes to make any changes to this zoning district. First of all, this is, this is basically an overlay zoning district, which means it lies over a, an underlying zoning district. The purpose of our overlay district is to allow some commercial uses while encouraging compatibility of uses with surrounding properties and also promoting efficient and safe traffic flow along highways. So it's a commercial, basically a commercial zoning district that lies over, you know, hence the word overlay, it lies over an underlying district. It affects four thousand four hundred parcels, and it basically extends along all of our arterial highways, and it stretches for five hundred feet on both sides of the road. To achieve the goal of promoting safe traffic and allowing commercial uses, it uses two methods. It first, the first method is design standards. It requires that commercial properties be developed in a way that addresses traffic flow, basically that your driveways have to be located in a certain area of the property. It addresses parking standards and parking placement and number of parking spaces, requires some landscape screening to help transition between properties. And it also has some requirements on the signage, to not allow signs that are too large or that are too close to a road to distract travelers along the highway. The second method of achieving the goal is to allow commercial uses. So when you look through our list of uses in our UDO, what you'll see is a long list, but you're going to find a lot of retail, office, amusement, recreation, and restaurant and personal service type uses. So it's, on a scale of our business districts, we have basically four types of commercial districts. I would say one being the most restrictive and four being the most lenient, I would rate this one two out of four. This is a full map of the county, highlighting the roads that's affected and that this zoning district is applied to. It's recognized or identified by that shaded red area along all of our major highways. And it's basically your two-digit, two-digit state roads such as seventy-four, eighteen, two-twenty-six, and two-sixteen. And you can see here that it stretches for all of the county from the, from the northern tip all the way to the southern tip. It's not an uncommon type of, or use of zoning district. We've scanned the counties around us, and you can see what this shows is that half have some version of this overlay while the other half does not. The counties that we've marked with green have a version of this type of commercial overlay while the counties in red do not. A little background, we adopted this zoning district with all of our other county-wide zoning districts in 2000. It was, I think the intent was to help ease in countywide full-scale zoning by still allowing commercial uses along the highways. In 2005, we approved a new land use plan, and it had strategies in it to eliminate this zoning district and to replace it with strategized commercial nodes. And then in 2000, I would say a couple of years after that, staff and the planning board began working on achieving that strategy or achieving that goal of replacing this. And then, as we know, in 2008, the economy was affected by the recession, and I think some of our land use topics and land use desires changed at that time. And so that was never achieved. 2021, the, our land use plan last year has language in it to be, to, to basically be more strategic about where your commercial is located, and it has a lot of encouragement to locate your commercial near intersections rather than strip development along your major roads through your rural areas. So both of our land use plans has, has language and strategies to replace this corridor protection overlay district. Moving forward, you know, some options that staff has thought of for the Board is, number one, if the Board makes no, if there's no action, then there's no change. So option one would be no action. Number two, if the Board desires, they could completely remove this corridor protection overlay district and just rely on the remaining zoning districts. Number three, the Board could remove it with, and give, and give staff direction to bring back options to reapply this district, and we can do that at your spring work session. If you choose options two or three, those would be essentially zoning map changes, rezonings, and those require notification. With, with this particular situation affecting over four thousand properties, it would be considered a large-scale rezoning, and general statute describes that we can use a half-page paper ad method to achieve that notification. We would still be required to mail notices to all property owners who do not reside within the county and are not within the paper's boundary. If you choose option two or three, staff would work for the next couple of weeks to meet the requirements for notification. We would mail notices to those property owners that are outside the boundary. Our planning board would review November twenty-ninth, and then we could set the public hearing if the Board desires for December thirteenth. If you choose option three, which was the temporary removal and then reapplication at your work session, if you choose that option, we have to still perform what I just stated through December thirteenth, public hearing. But then moving forward, January and February, staff would work with the planning board to create options of reapplication. And then April, May, we would work through the notification process to meet those requirements, and then we could hold a public hearing in July. And last, I'll remind you of those three options. Number one would be no action. Number two would be to completely remove it. And then number three would be to remove it and ask staff to evaluate options for reapplication. And I can answer any questions?
Questions or comments on the Board?
I do. I think anything that should be option four, leave things in place, study it, and then come back, because we put a temporary hold on it or do away with it. We got, what, four thousand four hundred sites out there that's non-compliant. So if they want to do a back porch or anything to their businesses, they got to come to the Board of Adjustments, which could overrun you right now with the workload you've got a couple of weeks. I guess question, can you get it done in a couple of weeks? I first thought about, you know, doing nothing, because one time in twenty years, we had one problem with it. That's what stemmed this. So to me, that's not enough to really change it. But in looking at what some maybe the other commissioners think, I don't think we should suspend it, if anything, leave it in place, make a bigger study, give you more time to really come back, because sometime too quick, and we don't get it right, we got to go back. So, you know, see what the other commissioners have. I've got, I will make a motion when it comes to time for it.
Chris, do you know how many counties in the state have it and do not have it, instead of just those three and us?
I do not. I did not evaluate any further than our surrounding counties.
And on the land plan, it was, there were still going to be corridors, but it was going to be at intersections, or did I understand that wrong?
It didn't specify. I think we would have some options there to, to use it as an overlay or to create a new district just for some intersections. But I think we would have some options there. In our land use plan, it didn't necessarily specify how to achieve that goal of commercial at intersections.
So it was just more or less thinking of removing it, but still having some sort of availability there, but you didn't get to the point of what that was?
Yeah, so I think the message from our land use plans is that you've got a lot of rural areas in the county, and a lot of the citizens there seem to like that rural character, and to look for ways to help maintain that rural character. And one suggestion is to evaluate this corridor that allows a lot of different types of uses and commercial uses that may not help maintain that rural character. But saying that, I think, you know, the message I'm getting is, you know, maybe there's areas of the county that it doesn't make sense to have the commercial uses allowed.
And there's no specific list of what they can or can't do? In other words, it's pretty much, just as long as you can put it in that, that area, you can put a business in.
There, there's actually a list of things that are allowed, and it's, you know, like I said, it's mostly office, retail, amusement, recreation type of uses. So no manufacturing. It would include anything, I would, I would guess that it would include anything in your neighborhood business zoning district, which is meant to have small-scale businesses that serve a community. And then it also would include a lot of the uses that are allowed in the general business district. But it, it wouldn't allow things like warehousing, distribution, manufacturing, things that require truck traffic. It stops at that point.
Well, our decisions have consequences, and lack of decision has consequences. So I would hate for us to just do nothing and then be sorry a little bit later. I mean, we look back and we see at 2005 and 2001, the land use plan called for elimination of the corridor and to encourage commercial development to be located in nodes at major crossroads. And that probably makes a whole lot more sense. So I'd like to see us choose option three and be studied a little bit and decide. And if we come back and decide we don't want to change anything, then that'd be all right. But if we, if we leave it as is and then study it, you know, we may be sorry in the next year that, that we didn't make a change.
It's probably not going to take them a year to study it.
Well, if you, here's another question. If you temporarily suspended it, and somebody wants to do something with their land, would there be an option for them to still do it? Does that make sense?
So, yeah, you couldn't necessarily, I think by temporary, just temporarily suspending it, what we would mean is to remove it.
But they could, could they rezon their land? I mean, my point is, could they still? I mean, my point is, could they still put a business there if they really wanted to at some?
Yes, if somebody, if someone had a desire to open up a new business, they still have the rezoning option, and they can come request that to the board. And like with any rezoning case, the board could determine if that proposal is compatible with the area and if it complies with land use plan designations. So there is an option to rezone.
In the event that the board decided temporarily suspended, okay, and some of these people has already got something in the corridor protection, wants any change, anything done to their business that, what, forty, forty to four hundred, then the only option is to pay the money, go back to the Board of Adjustment, list it, and go through the seizure rather than make any improvement to build it all. So it's not like, it's not going to affect nobody. It could affect some of the people. That's why, you know, I think that, to study it and leave it in place and study it, like I say, one time in twenty years. And we jump on this to change it. I, I think that leave it in place and study it and give you time to get it right rather than make a decision, and then if we don't make it right, we go back and change it.
So the, the businesses that are already in this corridor, they couldn't do anything?
They couldn't build a deck on the back of their building?
Yes, so that, this is the other scenario.
Would that not be grandfathered in?
Yeah, this is the other scenario. Existing businesses would be grandfathered in to operate as they are on the day of, of removal. However, if they wish to expand that business or add on to a building, they would be required to go to the Board of Adjustment and, and work through that quasi-judicial hearing process to get a permit from them. Rather than, if you're in the, if you're in the correct zoning district, staff can issue a permit. But if you're a non-conforming business, then you got to go to the Board of Adjustment. So removal could create some situations where businesses would have to go to the board to get expansion permits.
Can you go back to your list of options? So Johnny, Johnny and Doug, what's the difference between what you're asking or suggesting in three? Is the timeframe?
The timeframe for three, you temporarily suspended. When you temporarily suspend it, like you said, as of the day it's suspended, everything's in place, any improvements you want to make, then you got to go through the Board of Adjustment.
So we do that?
And go, go through the process of accepting or denying whatever. And what I said, do a four, leave things in place, but do a study. So maybe we could get it right the first time rather than have to come back and change it. So I would like to-
So just because I know what you were saying as well, close to that?
No, I was, I was saying nu, uh, number three would be the temporary removal.
I think, if I made this moment, you know, when we talked about it from staff, the volume of parcels that need to be looked at, the stretch of highway, we felt confident if the board wanted an analytic review with a more surgical, precise reaplic, or application, either modified application as it currently is or reapplication if it was removed, you're probably, you know, early spring, March timeframe, so maybe during the strategic planning work session would be an appropriate time. And so to Commissioner Hudson's point, I think the difference between the options is, one, is you leave it alone, so you continue to allow applications in the corridor between now and March, and what Commissioner Bridges is saying is that they would be disallowed until March. Sure. But both take the same amount of time. One is just you continue it versus you don't, and that would be option four.
So why can't we study it without taking it, removing it temporarily?
We certainly can.
I think I, I tend to agree with Johnny that moving it temporarily might create more of an issue. If the board's ultimately lands there, then that's a decision in the future. But I think moving tonight without having more information might, is probably premature.
So, I mean, the reality is that could be option one, which is no change, but, you know, directing staff to, to, to run the analytical review and bring it back at your work session. We're happy to do that.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, relieve it in place with the direction to the staff to review it and come back with some firm recommendation. And while they're doing it, maybe look at the businesses, some of the businesses already in it, and see if any of it's going to expand or whatever, sort of. Try to, does that make sense? Try to work with some of the businesses already in the area that you know might be wanting to expand so it doesn't cause them a whole lot of hardship or put them in a situation that you send it to the Board of Adjustments and they turn it down, and their next, his court is not like the planning board. The planning board comes back, does Board of Adjustment. If they turn it down, that's it. Their next option is a lawsuit. So maybe-
Or a bunch of empty business, or a bunch of empty businesses.
Or a bunch of empty businesses, so that's something that we don't need. So if we're going to do it, and I'll say, I, I'd like to see this, and I would make, I'll make a more motion, relieve it like it is, but really concentrate on bringing us back some options, good options, with some of those things in mind.
Got it.
So that's the one in, in the study, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, one interview.
Combination of one and three.
Yeah, good.
Okay, I'll second it.
So we have a motion in the second to no change with the research and data collection as Johnny had outlined. Anything, any other discussion or questions? All right, here and none, all is favorable, say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the Cleveland County Fair lease amendment and sale of property. Elliot, Eagleson's going to come forward and handle that, and at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the vice chair.
Thank you, Elliot. Before we start, if anybody wants to leave, you're welcome to. Commissioner Hudson's just put out, said that some of you might have family at home, so we won't, don't want to hold you up if you need to. Otherwise, we'll continue with Attorney Elliot Anstrom to present the information regarding the amendments to the fair lease agreement and sale of county-owned property.
Thank you, board. Thank you for having me here tonight. We're here to talk about the fairgrounds and something we've been talking about a long time in Cleveland County, the Shelby bypass. So there's actually, there's one presentation, but there's two separate items. One is an amendment to the lease between the Cleveland County Fair and the county for the fairgrounds, and the other is a sale of property to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the bypass. So we'll walk through each one. There's going to be two action items, and I'll kind of, kind of go through it. So background, as we all know, N C D O T is constructing the Shelby bypass. Actually, at some point, I forget, I was doing research, and I found a resolution from the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners from nineteen ninety-two in support of the Shelby bypass. So it has been something going on for a long time. The bypass is going to pass through property that is on the same parcel as the fairgrounds. I'll show you in a second, not where they have the fair, the same parcel of the fairgrounds. In fall of twenty eighteen, N C D O T contacted staff indicating eventually they were going to need some of this land for the bypass. And then it was this past summer that, so four years later, that D O T contacted the county and made the offer to purchase the property. And so this is, just, this is a G I S overlay of, I hope you can see it. On the right is, you know, the parcel of land where the fairgrounds is. The green on the left is the acquisition from N C D O T. You can see that that is not anywhere near the, where the fair actually happens. So we're not talking about anything that is going to actually impact the operations of the fair.
Elliot, the red button is the pointer.
There you go, right there. Green, that is, as you can see, and I believe they actually have already acquired this right up here, and they're working on this down here, but that is their business, I guess. So, and, and as, as already happened, we noted that Chairman Gordon had turned the meeting over to the vice chair, and that the clerks just, again, this is just a procedural matter since Chairman Gordon's on the fair board, he's recusing himself from the discussion of the, of the lease item. So the county currently leases the fairgrounds to the fair. The lease is part of a larger performance contract between the county and the fair. The proposed amendment simply releases an eastern portion from the lease, and the fair board has already approved and executed this amendment. And since surveying a piece of property this large is kind of expensive, I actually just whipped out my old geometry skills from tenth grade. And if you look at the southern tip of this piece of property, which is owned by the school, basically it's a line straight south, this part is coming out of the lease. Again, the actual fair takes place over here, so not an operational issue for them. And it's really that simple. It's about a one-page document that just releases that eastern part. And at this time, obviously, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions, but if, if, after any discussion, I request a motion to, to approve that lease amendment.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we-
Yeah, yeah, I just-
Approve the amendment.
No, I didn't make the motion. So you made a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, board. Just note at this time, if Chairman Gordon wishes, he can, he can resume duties as presiding officer. And so now we're talking about the N C D O T acquisition of that portion of the fairgrounds. You know, we just saw this, but again, this is in summer twenty twenty-two. D O T contacted the county and submitted an offer for this portion, as, as we'll talk about in a second. A D O T offer is really, we're offering this much, and we're going to get the land either way, right? So there's a negotiation process with D O T, but they, they, they have a process called condemnation where they, where they take land. So initially, they offered about four hundred sixty-six thousand dollars for twenty-five point seven nine one acres. That offer was accompanied by a professional appraisal. Staff did negotiate to five hundred ten thousand dollars for the twenty-five point seven nine one acres. We also tried to work on getting another eastern portion of the fairgrounds added because we thought that we might be left with, I don't want to get too technical, but it's called uneconomic remnant, but we are not left with that. So it's the land that the county is being left with on the east side is accessible by a maintained road, so D O T would not take that along with the rest of it. And this is what I was alluding to before, is that, is that when you negotiate with D O T, you know, ultimately, they'll condemn property. So you try to go through negotiation process and, and resolve things that way, and if not, they, they go through a litigation process called condemnation. We are not going to have to do that as we've been able to reach a negotiation with them. There's three documents attached to the resolution authorizing the sale. I was just going to briefly describe each of them for you. One is an agreement for entry. That's, that document would have more significance if, that's something the D O T asks people to sign sometimes, like six months before the acquisition, so that they can begin work on the land. It's not as big of a deal here because we're talking about the acquisition now. The second is the deed, which is the deed for the, that portion for the highway right-of-way. And then the third is a settlement agreement, and again, that's there simply because we're saying that we're foregoing condemnation proceedings and instead doing a voluntary exchange of property with, with N C D O T. Obviously, happy to answer any questions about any of this, and after any discussion and answering any of your questions, would request a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of a portion of the county-owned property to N C D O T. Thank you.
So board, do you have any questions for Elliot? Elliot, lay up if you put some out back.
Yes, sir.
I've got one there. You said there's something about the D O T wants permission to enter start working.
Yes, sir.
Are they going to pay us before they start?
So that document is something, so if you Google that document, it's kind of funny. They'll say, never sign this, right? That's because D O T sometimes will ask people to sign that and say, and now we'll start working on negotiating a deal. We're on the back end of negotiating the deal, so it's going to be their property, you know, within days of now. So it's really not that, as big of a deal. But if we were six months out from the sale, that would be, it'd be a much bigger deal to say, yeah, come on the property, begin working.
Any other questions? So Elliot, are you looking for a motion on each one of those three documents, or you want to do them all together?
So it's one resolution, and the resolution-
Does all three?
Has all three, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we authorize a sale for all three.
I'll second.
To approve the, yeah, to approve the resolution.
You good with that, John? Any other discussion or questions? All here and none, all is favorable, say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Elliot. So at this time, commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Just one thing. I've, I've had a couple of employees approach me about the impending bonus they're going to get this December, and thanking staff and the commissioners so much for it. I had a lady tell me yesterday that with the current economy, that she really didn't know what she was going to be able to do for Christmas, and she said when she got that email, that it just made her day, and that she wanted to convey to the staff and to the commissioners how much they appreciate it.
Anybody else?
I had, I had the same comment, and I've, I've got a, I guess a comment, suggestion. We're in the process of selling several pieces of property, some fine property, like the sitakers, and we wound up, we had intentions, we got good money for it, the site at Cove Road, what's over the fairground, and would it be, I guess, impossible, look, say, look, that money we probably need to set aside for buying other property, because I don't think that we've got much property for economic development out there right now. I know we've got a channel that when a company comes in, we put matching amounts on an account, but we just boost our account to the point that it would really benefit us if we transferred that money into that account to help us purchase other property.
Yes, yes, sir. The, the, the operational plan for all of those land sales, once finalized, was to account for those funds in our economic development fund, which is used for speculative land purchase and, and those type of, of things. So exactly what you described is, is the plan that's in place.
I, I know the one, but the one that would, would have a mark was an economic development as an other, but still, again, that's-
Very true, but also not part of the, the general fund operational budget, so we would account for that in the same, same place. So thank you for your point.
Anyone else? Brian or staff, anybody have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
All right, this time, I entertain a motion to recess, to reconvene. So let me read this first. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Monday, December the fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at ten a.m. here in the commission chambers for the required organizational meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and none, all is favorable, say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, we're recess-